We'll go ahead and call our meeting back to order. Mr. Linden, will you read us out of close, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Rona County School Board come out of closed session for the following: To discuss ongoing personnel matters under investigation pursuant to the Personnel Exemption at 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia; and to discuss the investigation of a student matter pursuant to the Scholastic Record Exemption at 2.2-3711A2 of the Code of Virginia. And I also move to certify that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under this chapter, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the school board.
A second.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Item 2.03, action from closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to read some action from closed session. I recommend the expulsion of a student, number 2023, to 2024, number eight, with placement to be determined by the IEP team.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Item 3.01, request for new summer overnight curricular-related supplement. Ms. Susan Peterson.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We currently have in our 2023-2024 pay plan, along with our adopted 2024-2025 pay plan, a supplement for overnight curricular activities that is $100 per night for the teacher that takes their students on the activity or the event. This covers the term of the contract, and as you know, the contracts end before the summertime, and so there's been a request to provide a higher stipend of $300 a night during the summertime. So the staff would like action to go ahead and adjust both pay plans for 2023 and 2024, and next year for 2024, 2025, to get this stipend implemented.
I'll make a motion to adopt that.
A second.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Item 4.01, summaries of the 2024-2025 federal grant, or title grants. Ms. Stephanie Hogan and Mr. Mike Robson.
Good evening. It's that time again for us to apply for our federal grants. I currently oversee Title I and Title III. As you're aware, with Title I grants, the funding for that is used for three different areas. It's used for academic instruction, it's used for professional development, and then it is also used for parent involvement. And we did a level funding for an application for the grant for this year, and it looks like for Title I, as of right now, the grant won't be approved until August, but we're applying for $1.5 million for our Title I grant. We will be adding two additional schools for this coming school year, which would be Glen Cove and Green Valley, based on their free and reduced lunch rate.
So that makes eight of 16 schools, right?
Yes, sir. It sure does. It's eight of 16 schools.
Half of our schools.
And then I also oversee Title III, which is a grant that oversees funding for providing support to our English-language learner population. And so with that, we're looking at a grant of about $57,000 for them for next year as well.
All right, Ben. I work with Title II and Title IV grants. Title II provides professional development for our staff in a variety of different areas. We have staff if they need to be dual-certified, we'll pay for college classes, if they need to teach AP-level classes, we'll pay for them to go to AP institutes. We pay for teachers to go to conferences, those types of things. We're actually, this next year, we wrote into the grant for teachers to be able to apply for and receive micro-credentials through things that they can self-select. That's one of the things that we know from staff, is they'd like more opportunities to kind of self-select professional development, so we're providing that opportunity for them. And of course, if you remember, we presented on professional development several months ago. A lot of the required professional development will also run through here, and we do have some local funds that the school board budgets for us to also provide professional development. And there's kind of a list of the different things we cover there. Then I also do Title IV. Title IV is fairly new. It's been around for about six years. There's basically three different areas that we can provide support to students in. It's making sure our schools and students are safe and healthy.
We'll go ahead and call our meeting back to order. Mr. Linden, will you read us out of close, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Rona County School Board come out of closed session for the following. To discuss ongoing personnel matters under investigation pursuant to the Personnel Exemption at 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia, and to discuss the investigation of a student matter pursuant to the Scholastic Record Exemption at 2.2-3711A2 of the Code of Virginia. And I also move to certify that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under this chapter, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the school board.
A second.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Item 2.03, action from closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to read some action from closed session. I recommend the expulsion of a student, number 2023, to 2024, number eight, with placement to be determined by the IEP team.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Item 3.01, request for new summer overnight curricular-related supplement. Ms. Susan Peterson.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We currently have in our 2023-2024 pay plan, along with our adopted 2024-2025 pay plan, a supplement for overnight curricular activities that is $100 per night for the teacher that takes their students on the activity or the event. This covers the term of the contract, and as you know, the contracts end before the summertime, and so there's been a request to provide a higher stipend of $300 a night during the summertime. So the staff would like action to go ahead and adjust both pay plans for 2023 and 2024, and next year for 2024, 2025, to get this stipend implemented.
I'll make a motion for, to adopt that.
A second.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Item 3.02, request to reallocate ESER pandemic grant funds for a bonus.
If you recall back in February, I came to the board and asked for approval to amend the ESER grant so that we could spend down all of our funds in a positive way for our employees by offering them a small bonus. At the time, we were thinking the bonus might be around $250. However, I wanted to put this in action item because we would like to achieve a $300 cash-out bonus, give it a little bit more money by spending some personnel lapse in the general fund, so we could provide a $464 bonus in gross, which would equate to about a $300 net cash in our employees' pockets for all employees who existed as of May 31st. The bonus will be in June 15th payroll. And so I just wanted to get official approval to use the general fund money in that way. The nutrition fund will pay for their folks. We've got about 165 folks coming out of the general fund for $82,487.89. Our personnel lapse will more than cover that small amount, and then the ESER grant will cover $950,360.47.
Do you need a motion here for this today?
Yes, please.
Yes, I'll make that motion, absolutely.
A second.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Item 4.01, summaries of the 2024-2025 federal grant, or title grants. Ms. Stephanie Hogan, Mr. Mike Robson.
Good evening. It's that time again for us to apply for our federal grants. I currently oversee Title I and Title III. As you're aware, with Title I grants, the funding for that is used for three different areas. It's used for academic instruction, it's used for professional development, and then it is also used for parent involvement. And we did a level funding for an application for the grant for this year. And it looks like for Title I, as of right now, the grant won't be approved until August, but we're applying for $1.5 million for our Title I grant. We will be adding two additional schools for this coming school year, which would be Glen Cove and Green Valley, based on their free and reduced lunch rate.
So that makes eight of 16 schools, right?
Yes, sir. It sure does. It's eight of 16 schools.
Half of our schools.
And then I also oversee Title III, which is a grant that oversees funding for providing support to our English-language learner population. And so with that, we're looking at a grant of about $57,000 for them for next year as well.
All right, Ben. I work with Title II and Title IV grants. Title II provides professional development for our staff in a variety of different areas. We have staff, if they need to be dual-certified, we'll pay for college classes. If they need to teach AP-level classes, we'll pay for them to go to AP institutes. We pay for teachers to go to conferences, those types of things. Where actually, this next year, we wrote into the grant for teachers to be able to apply for and receive micro-credentials through things that they can self-select. That's one of the things that we know from staff, is they'd like more opportunities to kind of self-select professional development. So we're providing that opportunity for them. And of course, if you remember, we presented on professional development several months ago. A lot of the required professional development will also run through here. And we do have some local funds that the school board budgets for us to also provide professional development. And there's kind of a list of the different things we cover there. Then I also do Title IV. Title IV is fairly new. It's been around for about six years. There's basically three different areas that we can provide support to students in. It's making sure our schools and students are safe and healthy. It's making sure that they have a well-rounded education. And then to help make sure that our staff are incorporating technology in an effective way. We can't use it to buy technology. Can't buy laptops and things with it, but it's more for training and those types of things. So what we propose this next year, we've done this for several years. It's been very successful. We've had a lot of students over the last few years apply for this. We cover the AP testing fee for any student who is on free reduced lunch, so you don't have to pay anything for the AP test. AP actually gives them a discount, but they still have to pay over half the cost. We pick up the rest of that from this grant. We also cover up to 10 credits of dual enrollment for students who are also on free reduced lunch to make sure that cost isn't a barrier for them to be able to go to Virginia Western and take those classes through our schools. So that's something that we've spent a lot of our Title IV funds on. We also support PBIS and the implementation of making sure that our schools are safe, that students and staff understand how to behave, those types of things in the classroom, to provide professional development around that. We've also, the past several years, we've provided Makerspace materials for the high school and middle school libraries. This next year, one of the things we'd like to do, we actually had a teacher from Burlington Elementary come to us. They would like to start an after-school strings program for those students. And you know Burlington's one of our Title I schools, so we're hoping through this grant to be able to purchase some violins. And we've got an instructor that wants to do it for kids to be able to experience that at Burlington Elementary School. So those are some of the things we do with the Title Grants. All this is in Board Docs. This will go to consent agenda for the next school board meeting. And we'll have the actual grants, which most of them are anywhere from 20 to 40 pages long, but those will be in Board Docs for folks to review. Do you have any questions for us about the federal Title Grants? All right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 4.02, Williamburg High School softball net, Mr. Harley Grimes.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, board members, Dr. Nicely. I wanted to bring to you an information item in regards to Williamburg High School softball. Their softball field lacks netting along the first base line. And so when foul balls are hit, they are going over into all the underbrush, and then they're having to go after them to get them because of the cost of the softballs. And so what we're looking to do is to add a net along that side that from the top of the visiting team dugout up 30 feet, and then 70 feet long, so that that entire side is covered. So the proposal, well, actually, the budget that we're looking at is around $45,000, which $36,000 is for parts and labor, and then $9,000 for any contingency, if we have to make any repairs to the field or additional parts, things like that. So the, we have spoken with the high school. We've also spoken with the softball coach. And we, any coordination and scheduling would go through Greg Barton. So with this, I guess the next step would be if the board so chooses to send us to consent agenda.
Tim, you probably know this, or you do, but I just have a quick question. So does that net get put up and then taken down? Or does it stay up permanently?
It stays up permanently, from what I have been able to find with the manufacturer.
How long do they get a last?
That's a question I do not have the answer for. Part of that would depend on the weather, but in looking at the manufacturer, the manufacturer has that information, but they don't have it on their public website.
I can tell you, the one we put up for baseball, which I wouldn't have recommended putting up, has probably been up about five years now, four, five years. And it's not been replaced, but it wasn't. It doesn't serve the purpose, this one will.
Well, I'm assuming the poles for the net, the structure itself is probably where the main cost is.
And the labor.
So you wouldn't have to replace that every single, I mean, if the net goes bad, you can replace the net, not the poles.
Right. You've got the infrastructure in place.
Correct.
So yeah, you're exactly right.
Mr. Greenway and I went over and looked at this the other day, and talked to the softball coach while we were there. It seems as though we've got about a, Tim, what did he say? About a $2,000 a year problem with softball?
The one thing we forgot, Dave, and I didn't think of this either, is that all three teams play on that field. So you have to multiply that by three. So you've got...
Middle school?
That's the only field we've got. Now, we do access some of the rec fields for, for practice, because, I mean, we just, we have one field each, that's it. Baseball has one field, softball has one field. That's all we got. So what I'd like to do at some point down the road is get Stonebridge so that we can have another field, but we don't, we just don't have one. So that's all we've got. So you're talking about 6,000, I thought it was two, but it's six. A little shot of 6,000 a year. I say we leave it on consent agenda and move on. So we're really talking about somewhere in the neighborhood of 40.
Sounds like we have any contingency.
Yeah. And that booster club's good about taking care of stuff and doing some themselves, so I'm sure they'll fix the field back, some of that stuff.
I'm happy to support you and put in consent.
Thank you. Thank you.
Throw it on the consent.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. 1.03, 2023-24 EAC report and PD survey results. Dr. Jessica McColl.
So last year, if you'll remember, Hannah Prater came and helped do the presentation to the board. And I told you all last year, I said she's going to be a great administrator one day. And now she's on the administrative team at Williamburg High School. So Hannah's going to start us out.
Thank you. So I'm Hannah Prater, and I served on the EAC committee this year. This is my second year, and unfortunately, my last year, as I move into assistant principal role. So I'll go through our summarization from this year. So we have four meetings a year, and the reports are sent to school representatives to disperse among, we normally send them by email, but they're always on Blackboard. And so in the future, I guess we'll go on Canvas, just so you can always look back. And Dr. McColl always starts our meetings with glows, just so we can hear the positives from each school, so that's easily everyone's favorite part. Here are all of our committee members that we had this year. You'll see that it's every elementary, middle, and high school, but we also have our nutrition services and transportation represented, things like that. So everyone is represented. So our, we have two-way communication with the board through these summarizations at the end, and then ongoing communication with central office through all of the questions that get answered at all of our meetings. And I already mentioned that we're represented by all employee groups. So we collect the issues and concerns, and now suggestions, which I'll get into, and present them at each of our scheduled meetings. And then Dr. McColl generates the reports to go out to the rest of the employees at all of our schools. So the ground rules are that it's a safe place to discuss concerns and provide suggestions. We have never had an issue with this in the two years I've been on it. It's always a really great, positive environment as we go through all of this. And items discussed at the division level are, and, or, these are all items discussed at the division level, and then site-based issues are handled on each site. So I know my form I had employees fill out says, is it a division issue or a school issue? If it's school, I just pass it on to our administrators. So our October meeting had the most questions. 62 were addressed. And then from those responses, we had these documents attached for reference, because they were referenced in some of the answers. And then following this meeting, we added, or you guys, you all added, suggestion for improvement, because it used to just, what was the concern and why? And now it asked for a suggestion, just so it could bring some more positivity. It wasn't just a complaint or a question that was sometimes in a negative light. It was, okay, what would you like us to do about it, just so we could see? So that was a good addition, I think. December, only 40 questions were addressed. And then Mike Riley was there to present on our PD that might be useful survey. And then in February, 51 questions were addressed. And this is when we first heard about the potential new PTO in sick leave, which was presented by Jim Bradshaw, which then got approved. We were all really excited and interested in that presentation. And in April, we got an update on that PTO plan. 31 questions were addressed. We had a budget overview by Susan Peterson. And then we did, we talked about the professional development survey that was about to go out. And then we have the results of that, which Dr. McColl's going to go over.
So every year, the EAC also tries to pinpoint one or two things that we can do countywide. Last year, we looked at no-cost, low-cost incentives for our staff, and this year, they've looked at professional development. So I'm going to go over this pretty quickly, but it's all referenced, and you have the full report also in Board Docs. So what we learned from the survey, most of our employees have been here quite some time, 15 to 20-plus years. We, it's kind of like Goldilocks. We asked them, what about the quantity of PD that's offered at their school? 72% felt that the quantity of PD their school's offered was, was right. We also looked, how satisfied with you are, are you with the topic relevance of the PD offered at the school? And about 53% were on the favorable side for that. And you can see the exact percentages and numbers of how many folks answered the question. I was pleased with the response rate. We had over 500 responses, so half of our instructional staff responded to the survey.
So it's 53%. You think that's good? What, what, what do you?
Well, it does a favorability. So we looked at seven to 10, a score of seven to 10, is how we range that. So you can see the majority of folks, 53% felt that that was favorable, that the topic relevance. But I'm going to get into issues about the topic relevance in just a little bit. Then we asked the same questions. We asked, how, how is it delivered in your school? Is that okay? And 62% felt it was favorable with how they do that, whether that's small group, whole group, individualized, having choices. We wanted to know if our schools, we talk a lot about professional learning communities, and we wanted to know if they participate in a well-functioning PLC at their school. And 86% of our teachers felt like the PLCs were, were effective. Now, we asked at the division level, 65% felt like the quantity of PD that we offer from the division level is appropriate. For topic relevance, again, only 52% felt that that was relevant to them at the division level.
Doesn't that kind of go back to the 53% similar?
Yes, yes. The response rate was similar to the school level and the division level in topic relevance.
Just to point out, under myself, if I'm filling out a 1 to 10 survey, if I'm putting a five or six, then I probably don't have a strong opinion about it. To, you know, that, quite a bit of percentage of that you find it's in that five to six range. So it's like, I, I, I think in terms of the number that are dissatisfied, I'd be looking at the, you know, one to 34 range.
I guess that's one way, though.
I, I, I'm just speaking for myself. I'm filling out a survey. If I don't have an opinion, I'm, you know, I'm either satisfied or dissatisfied. I don't have a strong opinion, five or six.
Delivery options at the division level, about 55% favorability there. We also asked teachers if they participate in any ongoing professional network that's outside of the school or division, and about 66% of respondents do. So that's good. On this chart, you'll see the main types of PD that staff participate in. Faculty meetings, great place to offer PD, group trainings, online and in person. And that kind of goes in order. We have lots of different types of PD, but the highest, yeah, I'd say we get most bang for our buck at faculty meetings and group trainings. We asked the question, does the recent PD that you've participated in, is it effective in improving your skills and knowledge? And 81% felt that it was.
I think that's a good number.
I do, too.
I mean, that, I think that's more reflective of our positive outcomes.
Yeah. We asked if staff have the adequate support and resources to implement what they're learning during PD, and 80% of our staff felt that they did. So I felt like that was pretty favorable as well. We asked if the PD contributes to their professional growth and effectiveness as an educator, and 75% felt like it did. We also wanted to make sure what we're offering aligns with their professional goals. And 69% felt like the PD offered aligns with their, their goals in the school. We wanted to know, okay, what, what's, what's the best way to participate in PD? And so most people still like in-person, even though COVID caused us to go virtual. Most like in-person, but there's a good chunk that still likes to have the option to do online. I would say those, those would be the two biggest pieces. So I think having multiple ways that we offer the PD is going to benefit our teachers. We also asked, when do you want to participate in PD? So the majority of people would like to participate, 81% during the school day with a sub provided. And that's because we have families, or, you know, we have kids in sports. It's, it's really difficult sometimes to do that after school. We wanted to know if they were interested in participating in more collaborative or peer-led professional development, because a lot of times, we're the ones that do that, or we call in trainers. 72% said they would like to do more collaborative or peer-led professional development. So that's an area we can look at in the future. And then we asked, would you be interested in leading a PD session? And even though there's only 31%, but, but we have 31% of our staff members that are willing to help deliver PD, and I think that's really meaningful. As a teacher, I put a lot of trust in another teacher leading that PD. So I think that's an area we can explore more to see what we can do to capitalize on that. Biggest challenge, this should be no surprise. Every survey we've given, the biggest challenge our teachers face, dealing with challenging behaviors. But what is interesting, now, even though 63% say that's the biggest challenge, when we asked if they personally need professional development in the area of classroom management, only 20% said they did. So...
Maybe their definition of management is different than what somebody else's.
Right.
That's what... Because you said, what was the other slide?
What's your biggest challenge that you believe professional development could help address? And they said dealing with challenging behaviors. But when asked if they want, if they need that, only 20% felt they did. What I'm going to do is probe a little bit deeper, and I'm going to say, you know, what, what is it that you do need to help with the challenging behaviors? I think we can, we can expand on that next year to get more information.
Yeah, I think if those words had been in that question, it would reflect the other question. But classroom management, I think perhaps the semantics of what is management, maybe they're thinking time of structuring and time management and...
Maybe.
...organization.
Maybe.
Not discipline management.
Yeah.
Because if it was written in the area of discipline or child, anyway.
I would just say, like in our world, that's typically, with the vocabularies. You're right. You're right. That's pretty typical vocabulary to talk about dealing with discipline.
Okay. But I would like to dig a little bit deeper, because we've done a lot of work on the proactive side of making sure our expectations are clear. We're doing training right now with conscious discipline to help give more tools to teachers. But there is no magic wand to address challenging behaviors, and we all know that there's been an uptick of really difficult behaviors, especially since the pandemic. So with that, we had 46...
So can I just add, so it could be behavioral management would be the key word that...
Sure.
...could have been missing.
I was going to say, teachers maybe aren't realizing, or the, the classroom management, they might feel is strong, but it's still not able to deal with the behaviors that they're seeing. So maybe they're needing extra supports that aren't necessarily in that category.
Yeah, I can believe that.
I think that's where the difference was.
And, and what we've done for years that has, has worked, isn't working anymore. So I think we're going to need to really think outside the box when we're dealing with some of the challenges that we have in our schools now, the mental health, the trauma, things like that. We asked about, oh, I think I skipped one, technology integration, and 46% of our folks needed or wanted more PD with technology.
I bet that has to do with Canvas.
It does.
Yes, I was going to say the same thing.
Yes.
Something new.
Yes. And also, another heavy hitter is 40% of our staff feel like they need more PD in the area of social and emotional learning. And I would say that's because of a lot of the, of the behaviors we're seeing, the trauma we're seeing, the struggles their kids are going through. Special ed strategies, 39% said they need that. I know Dr. Harmon has worked diligently to make sure training is clear, so she's got some great programs in, already with that. For curriculum development, not, not as much. About 28% said they'd like PD in that area. And assessment and data, Ben, I'm sorry, only 27% felt like... And, um, assessment and data, um, Ben, I'm sorry, only twenty-seven percent felt like they needed more. But I think that's because you do a great job of working with schools and the division. They see a lot of you, especially during testing time. We asked if they needed more PD in the area of inclusivity and diversity. And only twenty percent said they felt like they needed more training. We asked that because if you'll remember, the standards in Virginia now require that as part of a teacher's annual evaluation. So, but teachers don't feel like they need a lot of staff development in that area. We wanted to know what barriers they have, um, from fully and actively participating in PD, scheduling, time. We're going to, um, every, every survey we've ever asked, financial barriers, that's probably if folks want to take classes or go to conferences. Family responsibilities and a lack of relevance. There's a lot on this slide, but basically you have some folks who say it's, it's hard to afford and we don't have a lot of time. However, the common ground is everybody does agree, we need relevant practical training in our schools. So, um, we wanted to know, so what has been helpful? What have you benefited from? And yes, Hannah, campus training, they love the campus training. I thought it was great because they gave feedback, um, countywide share fairs. And, um, we've had those that have been hosted in our area. They are very appreciative of the standards of, of the science of reading standards. They like teacher share fairs. We've gotten a lot of positive feedback from that. The teachers also like specific training on writing and scoring writing examples. And I love this, they even named Sarah Bayer. They love her workshops and they say, um, practical activities that can be directly applied in the classroom. They love the trauma-informed care and focusing on mental health, not just for our kids, but for our staff. Because sometimes staff are, their job is hard and they, they internalize what happens with their kids. So not just worried about the mental health for students, but staff. And again, um, peer-led activities, small group, hands-on, um, and they especially like that in regard to reading and math instruction. And again, the debate over PD, you have some people who are advocates of PD, some people who are skeptics. But again, they say they want relevant PD that's going to make a change in their job. With that, um, additional comments, and, and this is a summary. They want relevant PD, they want more time to plan and reflect on their lessons and collaborate. Because we, we provide PD, but then we've got to give teachers time to process that and figure out how they're going to use it in the classroom. So that is nothing new, the need for time. They want to learn from and collaborate with their peers, which is why we want to dig deeper next year to say, who are those teachers who are willing to lead some PD? And let's see if they can, um, can bring some things to the table. They also, um, stress the importance of teachers' mental health and wellbeing. And, um, PTB, uh, PD being implemented and supported consistently. And I think we've really tried hard over the last few years since Dr. Nicely's, um, been here, to make sure everything's relevant to our comprehensive plan. And, and we're, we're not just doing a one-and-done meeting, that we continue to go back to what we know is evidence-based and, and effective for kids. So with that, um, yep, we've struggled with, we want it more relevant and we need more time. But we do have a desire for an improved PD structure, but making sure we're recognizing the teacher's workload as we come up with PD options. What I've done is also taken all of the data and put it in an executive summary that's quite lengthy. But I did link that on here for you all. And if you want to look at each survey question, you can go in and, and look at that. But what we want to do now, next year with the EAC is dig a little bit deeper, especially into management, um, of course, giving time. And, um, how can we utilize some of the peers?
That's great.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Very interesting. Four point zero four, request to amend the all-in Virginia plan, Ms. Susan Peterson.
I'm sorry. I know.
Oh, whole computer.
Oh, my gosh. The whole thing. I know you're looking like, wait, that doesn't look right. Did you shut down the car for me?
It is important to dig deeper into survey questions. I remember a principal saying once, they had done a parent survey. And one of the results was, they said, we want more student recognition. And the parent, the principal thought, well, gosh, we recognize students all the time in different, you know, recognitions, awards and honors and that kind of thing. And so then they follow up with some kind of a focus group where they came in and asked deeper questions. And they said, no, we want more student recognition, we want you to know the names of all of our kids, right? So about student recognition, the vocabulary is important.
That's vocabulary is important. Semantics.
I just add that story.
That was good.
You were the filler.
How was the filler?
That's commercial break. Thank you.
I did.
Sorry. You were having a computer trouble.
Go ahead.
Okay, so the next item, uh, we wanted to bring before you just, there's information agenda. Um, and if you so desire, we can roll it to consent at the next board meeting. Staff would like to amend the all-in plan. Typically, when we have a grant, we don't necessarily bring all of the amendments to you when we shift within the, the grant. But, um, since this one had a whole new topic that we haven't funded under the, the plan, we wanted to bring that back to you, um, to make you aware. With the all-in plan, you did approve this back in, uh, November. This is additional money that the state gave us one time, uh, this year so that we could, um, it had multiple facets. Dealing with student attendance, dealing with, um, the literacy act and, and closing that gap. We set aside a lot of excess money for tutoring, um, and closing out our Easter grants that have to be spent within five months. We made a big push to take anything that qualified for these Easter grants out of the all-in plan and actually get them reimbursed under our Easter grants to properly spend all, as much money as we can. So that led to a little bit of, of, um, lapse in this grant. We also, um, when we first built this plan, we put in elementary, uh, summer school, uh, and, but we had already, um, budgeted that fully in the general fund. And we, we went back and we ran the numbers and we should be completely covered with what we have in the general fund for the elementary school. So we're going to take that out, um, because we, we're not going to need it. We're going to move part of the middle school, summer school, but not all of it. And all of these are kind of reductions that will fund the next three things. We put into this, this grant, uh, an A-stuff facilitator, a truancy, math and reading specialists. And when we ran, uh, the, the numbers for raises through next year and the following year, uh, we were going to be under by two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand, but this can be covered with some of the overages. We also needed additional curriculum materials for the Virginia Literacy Act, and so we moved money for that. And then the last big item on here, the new item that we wanted to really bring before you, was to provide a five-hundred-dollar stipend for teachers for an immense load of additional professional development specifically related to the Virginia Literacy Act. So that's about six-hundred-and-fifty teachers we have identified will be required to, what is it, a fourteen-hour course?
Nine modules.
Depending on what you teach, elementary, middle school, and what subject you teach. It's either from one to two hours per module or two to three hours per module. And based on the ones who have done, the, the reading specialists have done some so far, and they say definitely requires the full amount. Part of the issue, and I've, I've mentioned this to you before, is those modules are still in development by the state. And so we're expecting the elementary ones to come out sometime this summer. The middle school ones, we're still not expecting to get till the fall. So, and the, the, the state is requiring, this is actually in state law, they're requiring this training and it has to be completed by next school year. So I've mentioned this to you before, I mean, this is a huge ask. In addition to everything else that our teachers are being asked to do, plus math standards are changing next year, plus the English language arts standards are changing next year. And, um, I mean, you know, our, our teachers are troopers and this, this even, even, you know, offering the, the stipend. And the stipend would go to the ones who have to do the nine modules. Okay, so if anybody who doesn't have to do the nine would not do that, those who have to do the nine modules, the full thing, um, would, would, would qualify for that. And that's still, if you look at it on an hour-by-hour basis, I mean, it's not paying people what they're worth, but it is an effort and acknowledgement to say, hey, we know this is a huge load that, that we're passing along to you from the state. I, I've mentioned to you, building into the calendar, maybe a couple of extra early dismissal days to also try to offset their time. But even if we do that, you're still talking, you know, up to twenty-one hours for a lot of our folks.
So this is going to be an action item.
This, this is actually, um, uh, something that would just go on.
It can be good, uh, consent.
Consent, so we need to make a motion here?
No.
We can just put it on consent.
Okay. Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
You know, can I just add one thing, cause we did just, just discuss this? Because this is such a big lift.
Thank you for.
It's important for people to understand that this is an extraordinary circumstance and extraordinary times, that, you know, and if, this isn't setting a precedent that every single time there's professional development with this kind, cause you know, people do SLL training and all this. This is just, this is different.
Thank you for saying that, yeah. And just to clarify, I'll say that again, um, cause obviously, as you all have seen through previous presentations, there's all kinds of training that's required, different things have to be done. And so we can't set a precedent that we can always do that with extra. But this truly, to your point, is extraordinary, is unprecedented, this, the number of hours that were being required. So this is extraordinary measure for an extraordinary.
Yes, circumstances. Just didn't want anybody to be under the impression that going forward, oh, yay. Hopefully we won't have any more of these moments in time, in history.
Item four point zero five, request to approve the memorandum of understanding between Roanoke County School Board and Cave Spring Baptist Church.
So if anyone has been to an, an athletic event at Beagle Stadium, uh, you know that traffic is, is pretty heavy over there at times, depending on who's playing. And oftentimes, parents will park at Cave Spring Baptist Church, um, because there is just not that many spots, especially, uh, when certain schools in town play each other. In the past several years, I think, um, we've had a, a couple of folks have been hit crossing the street. And so, uh, we have asked VDOT to put in a crosswalk there to make it a little safer for, for our, um, families that walk back and forth. When this came to be, Cave Spring Baptist approached us and, and just, uh, requested to have something informal that we could kind of just lay out. We could, um, add them as an additional insured in our policy. And then, um, that way we could ensure that we're not going, our parents are not going to do to our negligence, tear up their property. And they're not responsible for anything that's going to happen unless it's their own property and it's their own negligence. And so this is just a memorandum of understanding. It is attached to board docs, you have a copy in your packet so that you can read through. We just request that you, we've, this memorandum has gone through the insurance company, it's gone through the lawyers, it's gone through Cave Spring Baptist lawyers. And so it's ready if y'all are willing to, um, sign it for next year. This would be as with any memorandum of, of understanding that we have with any external entity, something that we will bring to you on an annual basis. So this is for next year, it would start July and go through this quarter.
That's good.
The church has always been so generous in letting folks park there. This, the, the key piece of the year is to add that to the insurance.
Good deal.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Item four point zero six, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, annual budget work session number five.
All right, what everyone has been waiting for. So, uh, Ms. Claire Harland is an account executive at, uh, USI Insurance. And she is going to help when we get to the insurance part of this, uh, presentation, because I think there had been some additional questions as to our rates and why they are where they are. And so she's come to help provide a little more background, um, when we get to that part. So, thank you, Claire. We will start by going over some revenue updates. I'll review the states, uh, revenue update, a couple of items that are, are pretty a big deal coming out of that. And then take a quick look at the county revenue update. So with the state revenue, what you have in front of you and in your packets, uh, the first column is the final chapter one budget that was adopted in December. It is the current budget for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. That is our baseline budget, um, as you know, and we will add to that. On March twenty-first, the second column is what the school board adopted, is our budget for next year. And you can see the increase or decrease, um, overall, five-point-six million in the general fund, but overall, two-point-million, uh, for all funds. Then the next column, uh, reflects the revenue, uh, amount for, that was just adopted by the general assembly. So this is the final revision, this is the final amount. Um, and then we do have an increase of revenue of about four-point-one million that is coming to the school board. So that's some great news to hear. Um, and you can see the, the difference. I will make a quick, uh, note, uh, about this slide. As you, I've presented this slide every time I've presented the state revenue. One thing that is a little bit different, we have the projected ADM of thirteen-three-seventy-five. That number is still what we project our enrollment will be for next year. However, there is a very specific line item for the special, the regional special education program. That line is only for thirty-nine students that we report separately, that are in very special programs. And the rest of the SOQ revenues do not include those students. And so when I reran the, the Calc tool numbers, I pulled those students out just to run the SOQ basic aid. But the numbers together, they're still, um, the correct numbers for ADM overall. Okay? And then at the bottom, you can see the per pupil amounts. Um, and I broke out, you know, the, the majority of them for the thirteen-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty-six students. And you can see that, yes, when we break out the thirty-nine students, that is quite a large, larger number, uh, coming per stu, per pupil because of the intensity of that program. Always on the top of everybody's mind, uh, they want to know what, what's going on with the raises. So when I brought the budget to you in the beginning, I brought you the governor's budget. The governor's budget had a bonus, but no raise. When he adopted the final budget, he provided a, uh, raise of three percent in both years of the biennium. So three percent for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, and three percent for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. Uh, keep in mind, when we get this funding, it's only for the SOQ positions and it's only for, you know, the state portion. It doesn't include the county portion. So we're not fully funded, but we are funded more than, than, um, we have been. Two little quip o'quoes about the funding is, um, every, a school division must provide at least one-point-five percent in either one of these years in order to get a prorated portion of the raise. And if you give more than the three percent in the first year, that percent will carry over and be applied against the three percent in the second year. So you can get the funding in both years. So if we did, for example, if we did a four percent raise this year, that extra one percent could be applied to next year. And we could do a two percent next year, plus one percent would be the three percent. All I am saying that for is that would get, it's a, a different way of thinking to get to a bonus. I'm not advocating that at all. I'm just trying to explain the slide and the governor's budget. The other really big change this year, um, and I won't beleaguer this, this is the, the calculation. There was new, uh, legislation that came down about how they fund, uh, your ELL teachers. In the past, they just took one number, they took the funded students and, um, provided twenty teachers per thousand students. And so in the past, we've only had to fund about thirteen, well, this is twelve teachers, um, and that was the funding that they gave us. Going forward, they are looking at breaking it out by proficiency in order, in, in a certain mechanism to provide more, um, teachers for those students who, you know, are, are, are needing more services at the, at the level one, uh, as opposed to once they hit above the level four. And so this really affected us and it brought us up to where, uh, we do need about twenty-three teachers for next year, if these numbers come to fruition. These numbers will be published on September. So every line in the Calc tool is determined on a student count at a different point in time. Uh, the majority of them are that March thirty-one ADM number that we, uh, focus in on. This is one that is determined as of the fall enrollment report that we submit. So we will know, um, when we pull together our September thirtieth numbers, exactly what this is for next year. And then we can, um, act accordingly if, uh, the numbers sway from this. But this is providing a larger chunk of money to us. And so you'll see later on, we are recommending adding eight teachers specifically for English learners. It's very complicated. The county revenue update, so just wanted to share, we are all very aware that, you know, the, the county runs their revenue numbers early to provide, uh, the formula to us so that we can use it, um, knowing full and well that it is a draft, it is not final. And when they finalized this year, they did reduce taxes, uh, for their real estate by two cents. And so that took their revenues down by, you know, two million dollars. And when that ran through the, uh, revenue sharing agreement, it did bring our revenue down by eight-hundred-and-forty-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars.
I sure didn't pay any lower taxes.
Yeah, so, so let's make that.
Yeah. So, so let's make that note, just so everybody knows. We increased revenue because of real estate assessments by twelve million dollars. There's the two cent we gave back for two million dollars. So we raised revenue in the county, ten million dollars. Out of that two, two million dollar real estate decrease, which I'm thrilled that we're giving to our citizens. They could have eaten that eight hundred and forty thousand dollars out of that ten million dollars so that we could. And keep in mind, one of the questions to our staff at that podium that day was, how are y'all going to close the gap with the other localities? You ask that question, and then the next question is, we really wish you would give the raise that we give to our Roanoke County employees, which was less than, than we're able to give out of this, this budget for teachers who are a profession that you just can't come off the street to, to get into. And oh, by the way, we're going to take eight hundred and forty thousand dollars away from your, from your revenue. But we want you to make up that gap. So all of that to say, do they understand the question? That we're trying to, trying to close the gap and, and stay up with our teacher pay? So it makes me think, I'm not sure if they do understand where we get our funding from. Anyway, I, I just want to make sure that's known as we move forward.
The county is giving us five point six million dollars more this year than, than we got last year.
And why is that? Where'd that come from?
Well, it came from there in two seven years.
Exactly. Real estate assessment increase. And if we recall what side of government we consider that we're from. Anyway, that's, I'm, I'm getting off topic. I'll, I'll do that.
Matter of ignorance. I think it's a matter of motive in, in what you're questioning.
Yeah, that's right. That's right. Yeah, they, they know.
Well, when we continue to look at the add-ons, we won't be able to do a lot of the add-ons because we're short now eight hundred and forty, a hundred thousand dollars. I mean, really, that's what it comes down to is, is we're feeling the pinch. And there's other things that we would like to be able to do, and we just can't do it.
Yep.
So that's all the board supervisors.
Yeah, we're appreciative. And, you know, I realize that we're getting increased revenue, which also helps. But there's a larger question, a larger point to be made from the other side. So nonetheless, you know, we'll move on and we'll do the best we can. I think we're doing, doing fairly well.
So we're going to move into health insurance next. Really, I brought Ms. Harlan in with me to provide some expert advice. She is top of her field and knows this stuff inside and out. And is, I couldn't do what I do without her help and her guidance. I, I don't have any different rates to provide at this point. And when we go through the information to share with you, I'm, I'm hoping you'll understand that it, it is the choice of the board of if we want to fund additional insurance, we can do that, or we can fund compensation. I mean, I, I have presented this in the past and none of us are happy that, that the rates went up. But it has been several years since we've raised the rates. And it, it, it is a small amount compared to what we can give them in raises. So let me, let me go ahead and get started. But I did want to give you kind of a heads up of what to expect. So I'm going to go ahead and let Claire jump in and.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity. I will try to address any questions you may have. Health insurance does get to be complicated and emotional all at the same time, and we recognize that. This slide is really kind of getting down to the basics of how do you fund your insurance program? And Roanoke County Public Schools, as a large employer, has a self-insured, self-funded health insurance program. What that means is you are accepting the majority of the risk to fund that program. And in exchange for doing that, you're going to pay less than if you allowed the carrier to hold that risk. So if you look at this chart on the left-hand side of the page and we work from the inside out, that's the fundamental difference. Because insurance is at heart at risk management. Who's going to fund the risk for the insurance claims? So in a fully insured contract, the carrier holds that risk. And in exchange for holding that risk to pay the claims on behalf of Roanoke County Public Schools, they would charge a risk charge. They would be more conservative in their underwriting projection, and they would provide insurance premiums that say, this is what you pay. This is, this is it. As a self-funded plan, you have a lot more flexibility. You're holding the majority of the claim risk. You do purchase stop-loss insurance that protects you against individual catastrophic claims. So that's the level of risk insurance that's within your program. But the claims are the claims. And Roanoke County Public Schools is funding those claims on a regular basis as you're billed by the carrier. So that gives you some flexibility. It gives you a lot more choice in what you do. And that sort of leads to the next side on plan design. That as a fully insured plan, the carrier can dictate, these are the plans you offer. This is the components of the program. They'll give you choices, but they like to kind of standardize and make it fixed. As a self-funded plan, you have a lot more flexibility. We did a lot of work this year looking at adding that second plan and what should that be? Should it be the ultimate two thousand dollar deductible? Should it be a higher deductible? What would it do with a difference in the rates? And we provide the analytical and actuarial support to help make those decisions. So it gives you a lot of flexibility. If there are other benefits that you wanted to include within your health plan that a carrier might standardly exclude, you have the ability as a self-funded plan to say, I want to include that benefit. So that's kind of where that plan design flexibility comes into play. And then finally, when you look at how the plan is paid, it's different. As I mentioned, with a fully insured plan, the carrier sets the premiums. You still decide how much the school board pays versus how much the employees pay. But basically, the carrier sets those premiums. They built their margin in because they are at risk. With a self-funded plan, we develop the premiums based on what we are anticipating projected claims to be. We add in for the fixed cost. We add in for the stop-loss cost. And then those fees are what our goal is, is to set funding rates that are shared between the school board and the employees that will cover those expected costs. What we saw this year is that your claims took a, a rise. And we'll have a slide that sort of indicates that. It's one of those things that in my years of doing this, happens. It's called what I call a perfect storm. And nobody quite knows why, all of a sudden, there's a rise in catastrophic claims. The fixed costs, we negotiate with the carrier, they're flat year over year. Your increase in stop-loss reflects the increase in catastrophic claims we've seen, but that's sort of leveled out. What ends up happening as a self-funded plan is we set rates to fund the program. If they are a little bit higher than you needed, that goes into your reserve to offset that year where the claims were higher than we anticipated. And we dig into reserves to make everything work even. So that's sort of like the funding of it. And you can see on the right-hand side that the admin fees, the fixed costs are basically the same regardless of funding. On the fully insured, it's kind of the claims and margin and what the carrier's built in, plus the administrative fees. On the self-funded side, you have the administrative fees. We have the stop-loss fees. And then we have the claim cost. And anything that is below that is a win for Roanoke County Public Schools because you didn't have to pay that amount. So it's just, it, our practice sees that pretty much any customer that has at least two hundred fifty to five hundred employees elects to go self-funded because they can cover the risk and take the, take, take that win for when claims are better than expected. So that what you're doing is very much the norm for clients.
I just wonder if we should maybe reevaluate that self-funding. If we're going to continue to have these claims, because our, our staff and our teachers can't absorb these high, these high premiums. If they're going to rise like this each year, we give a, we give a increase in pay. And it's offset by the increase in, in premium, and it's just not sustainable. So, and, and then if we try to get them on a lower cost premium, then it takes away from our self-funding. So, you know, where, or is that need to be reevaluated?
The, the key is that the fund, changing the funding will not necessarily lower your cost. Because there's going, if you were to go to fully insured and the carrier assumes the risk that the schools is assuming today, they're going to build in margin. They're going to use higher trend numbers. They're going to build in a, a risk fee of at least about three percent. There's a state premium tax that goes into a fully insured plan that is not charged, that the state collects. It's, I believe it's two and two, two and a quarter percent that you don't have to pay as a self-funded plan. So what I always kind of look at is you carry your claim liability with you. So our goal is how can we manage that claims? Because the insured, if you're insured, the carrier's going to set the premium to cover your claims. If you're self-funded, we're going to work to set the premium to cover your claims. But what we are able to do with a self-funded plan is pull all the extra margin out and allow you to pay as little as possible. What we want to focus on is are there things we can do to better manage chronic cost, chronic conditions? We've got a wonderful health and wellness center to get people engaged in that, to, to really take that long-term approach of what can I do to make my health risk as low as possible? What can we do to encourage and engage employees so that they, they do take better care of their health? Because that's what drives claim cost at the end of the day. But funding in and of itself is not going to change the claims, and your premium is based on your claims, regardless of your funding.
So if we, if we come back to you next year with these, with similar claims, that premium increase is probably likely going to be similar in nature. And so at some point, it becomes unsustainable, I would say. And so there's got to be either an alternative or a different way we can, can manage the healthcare.
And, and we work with that. What I historically see is claims kind of go like this.
Sure.
This is your bad year. I can't promise you that next year will be a sunshiny year. But we don't typically see a long stretch of these higher than normal costs, because things kind of always fund back to the average. What I will see is if they spike, they'll come down. They may not come down as low as they were. But they'll come, come into a more line, and the rate of increase will be more reasonable. It's been, and I have watched, because I've worked with the consortium that makes up Roanoke County, Roanoke County Public Schools and the jails. I've worked with you now for about fifteen years. And I have watched each entity have their share of this is my bad year.
Are we in line with anybody else right now for a bad year? Is this consistent across?
I would say that the school board has the, the, the highest of the increases between the three. But the last couple of years were harder on the county, to be quite honest.
What happens with, it goes up, the rates go up, then it goes down, but the rates don't go down. I know at some point, I guess, you, you have to have that margin there.
If you go back and look, and I, I did some homework looking at this, and I don't think we have a slide that necessarily addresses it. But over the last five years, there were several years where you didn't increase your rates at all. Our recommendation as a consultant was maybe a five or six percent increase. But you, but you chose to not increase, or you put in maybe a three percent increase. So you have that flexibility as a self-funded client. So you didn't, you, you were playing that game of looking at it, not game, that's the wrong word. But that strategy of, well, we don't think we really need as much. We've got this in reserves. We want to protect the employees. We don't want to raise. This year, we sort of got to a point where costs went up. And there, there, there was still, by adding the second plan, you were offering your employees an opportunity to make that tough decision of, do I take the risk of potentially having a higher deductible, but knowing I'm going to pay less out of my pocket by moving to the new plan and, and having a lower premium? Or do I want to stay with that more conservative approach of, I want the lower deductible and I'm willing to pay more? So by offering your employees the choice of two plans this year, you at least gave your employees an opportunity to make that decision. I mean, we'd all like to never have an increase. I'd like that on my plan. That doesn't happen to me either. But it does at least give you, you are offering your employees choice. And you had a significant number of your employees move to the new plan. They made that choice of, and when I look at claims, probably about seventy percent of your employees have less than a thousand dollars in claims in a given year. So to buy down to that higher deductible isn't going to cost them more in claim risk, and they've saved in premium. So that's kind of how we try to offer choice.
That's the balance, right? Because, because the teachers, you know, I mean, you can't, can't give them four or five percent raises and, and go up in premium four or five percent. It just, you know, it all.
Seventeen percent for a family this year.
Yeah, so it, it just.
To stay in the current plan.
Well, a lot of people, it, it may not be something that they can help. And then they're in a situation where they can't afford to go to the higher deductible because they realize that come January one, and that's another question too. So with the health savings plan, so your deductible resets in January, but yet the H S, the, the health savings plan doesn't get reloaded until July. So that leaves somebody from January to July. You see what I'm saying? Like where.
The way that, yeah.
Yes. So why, why is that? Why are we not doing July to July where when we reload that health savings for, for our employees?
I would say that's a historical piece, that Anthem used to always do calendar year deductibles.
If there's.
We could move it to a fiscal year deductible. But you have to be careful when you do that, because there's always somebody that just met their deductible. And now you're telling them they've got to meet it again because you change it.
And for me.
It's, it's, it's a careful consideration in making a decision like that.
Right. And I mean, I know for me personally, I have a son with a health condition that requires a lot of medical care. So I'm going to go through, I max out my H S A, that's H S A, right?
H R A.
H R A. Okay, so the H R, I maxed that out. But by the time I get to, you know, maybe February, I'm out. So then I'm paying that deductible until I get to July. It sure would be nice if your card reloaded at the same time where you're helping people out, but I see what you're saying.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's historical. It's kind of one of those, it's always been that way. Because for a long time, that was the only option Anthem offered. They do both now, either a plan year or a calendar year. We could do the evaluation and kind of see what we could work out to make it as, not as painful as, you know, as painless as possible for folks. Because that's the concern. Somebody's met their deductible or met their out-of-pocket maximum, and then all of a sudden, it resets six months earlier than they were expecting it.
Well, and a lot of our employees, I mean, you got to think of what a starting teacher makes, and then you're going to drop two thousand dollars out of your pocket? That's a lot. So I mean, that's, that's kind of where I'm at with it, is if you're taking it out, the whole benefit of it is we preload that. So there, it's coming out of each paycheck, but the money's there. To me, that would help somebody out a whole lot versus having to come out of their pocket in January, if they were in a similar situation than I'm in.
Well, we certainly can take that back and kind of do the evaluation for, for going forward to see if it, and see as well is if that's a concern at other, the other organizations, because they may be getting the same kind of questions. It has not been brought to my attention, but we certainly can evaluate it.
Sure. I think it's one of those things, we've always done it that way, so nobody ever questions it. So I mean, I definitely think that it could help some people out.
We should, and we should have said upfront, and kind of work members know this, but just, we have folks watching at home. To clarify, Claire does not work for the carrier. She does not work for Anthem. She works for.
I work for U S I Insurance Services. So I am, yes, I am not paid by the carrier. I'm not paid by Anthem. I.
Right. And I'm not blaming, I don't think that I was blaming you or anybody here is blaming you. I don't want you to take it that way.
We just forgot to say that upfront, because I know some people.
My thanks that I work for Anthem, yes, but no, I don't. And as a self-funded plan, ultimately, you're at risk. So we, we provide, provide the subject matter expertise and the analytical tools to help you try to fund your program appropriately.
Right. Yeah, we're not, we're not blaming you for it at all.
I bet if you ever tried to align those two things, I've always felt the same thing. Sorry about that, Chuck. I keep getting my microphone. I, I'm guessing we probably would have to try to budget to move when the H R A loaded versus the other way around.
There's a component built into your program right now that's called a carryover deductible. So any amounts incurred in the fourth quarter can count towards that deductible in the first quarter. That's a little bit of a, it used to be very common. It's very unusual now. But Anthem has, because your self-fund, that has allowed you to keep that component. That helps offset some of the deductible risk. But we could run some data and look and see how many people, like historically, would have been impacted by such a change. Because whoever was impact, you know, then, won't be the same people, but the. because whoever was impact, you know, then, won't be the same people, but the number or the percentage of folks that would be impacted are likely to be similar year over year.
And I mean, it just makes sense to me that your card reloads, your deductible restarts.
Be helpful.
It would be very helpful for folks, especially if you have an unexpected, you take that two thousand dollar plan, you have an unexpected health scare and you end up with, I mean, it doesn't take much, you go to the emergency room, you get some test run, you'll be paying two thousand dollars, let's just face it.
And we, we could work it in the other direction. Of your health reimbursement account, your flexible spending accounts. They run July to June with your plan year. We could move them back to calendar year and have them, have them move versus your risk policy renewal. So, we can let us go back and take that as a takeaway to do the analysis on it and, and come back to that.
I know it doesn't help for this year and, and the increase that we're about to, or employees are about to have, but it might be nice to go back and look at the last three to five years and, and what we have not done that may have been recommended from the carrier to.
I did that.
You did that.
Let me pull my little notebook out.
This is why we love her because she anticipates everything.
I, I looked, went back and looked back as far as FY twenty. That year, you were fine. You, we actually recommended no increase and you put in a two-point-two percent increase that you shared with employees. And fiscal year twenty-one, we were recommending a six percent increase. You put in zero percent. In FY twenty-two, we were recommending six-point-four, you were put in zero. FY twenty-three, we were recommending six-point-four. You put in a three percent that you shared with employees. And then for fiscal year twenty-four, that was a bid year. We actually looked at, that you didn't need to put any increase in at all and, and that's what you did. And then we're working in advance. In fact, we've got a slide that sort of talks about how we work through our process. So, what the claims are when we work the renewal. And then what happened was all of a sudden claims started to pick up and what we set in budget by the time we got to the end of the plan year was not where the plan year ended. So, but that gives you a little history of, of what we've done. Good questions, I'll look at the next slide.
And so, where, like you were talking, these couple of years in there where we didn't raise them at all. I mean, I think that would compound the situation.
And I'm not sure you needed that full, you may not have needed that full increase historically if we look back at where the claims actually were, but it would have shored up reserves a little bit.
Been more baby steps to get to where we are.
Yeah.
And comparing to our neighbors, we're still doing pretty good. Is that right?
Yeah, I don't think of a slide for this, but I think I sent it to you, I did the comparison on the two thousand deductible plan. And I, I won't name divisions, but, you know, the ones right around us for that level of plan, which is the new one we're offering this year, our premium is actually lower than what they were able to do. One of the neighbors is, is, is lower, but also their plans run on a calendar year. So, at least two of our neighboring divisions anticipate raising their insurance rates probably come January. And I think one by a very significant amount, so, I won't name names, but that's context.
Okay, right.
I know in past years, we've tried to help employees out as much as possible, but we do probably need to be mindful of what their recommendation is each year so that it's not as painful.
I recognize. We went through a period not too long ago where you guys couldn't put in raises. So, to increase health insurance was very painful across the Commonwealth. So, I work with a lot of public entities. But yeah, if you can put in a one or two percent a year, a couple of percent a year, you do sort of offset some of that having to do a really big one. But that's hard, that's hard a lot of times. We went through some tough, tough times and I recognize that.
But it does go back to what Susan had presented a meeting or two ago in regards to giving more salary versus giving more benefits because the VRS at the end is better, quite better.
The other thing is if you give a three percent raise and a three percent increase to your health insurance, they're not the same numbers. They, what you're paying for health insurance is, is a lot lower than your salary. So, but I understand because I've heard of before employees say, you just took away my raise. I, I get it.
It's money in your pocket today, but not necessarily tomorrow.
Correct. So, this slide just kind of talks about how you purchase. You do joint purchase with the county and the jails. You've done that for many, many years. And it is, in my professional opinion, to your advantage because as a large group, you have more buying power. As a group of almost three thousand lives combined, you are certainly the biggest entity. But when you're negotiating fixed fees with Anthem or whoever your carrier would be, you've got a lot more buying power as a, a group that's almost three thousand lives. The other thing that you get there is for stop-loss, you're spreading that risk across the whole group. So, where you've had some high-dollar claims come in over the last year or so, when Anthem's setting their cost for that, they're looking at the total population, not just the schools. So, there's always more stability in a large population, it's kind of that law of large numbers. So, you're very, you're a group that's fairly predictable, obviously not totally predictable. So, for the procurement process, the Commonwealth, as you well know, requires you to procure at least every five years. We have done this consistently for you guys. We combine the claims and the enrollment experience. But when we per, we go out and we purchase together, but you fund and you budget independently. So, there's no cross-subsidy in claims between the organizations. You're responsible for your claim liability, the county's responsible for theirs, the jails is responsible for theirs. And so, what each entity may have as a rate increase year over year could be very different because it is based on your, your experience. That's why you have different rates. We last, just went to market in twenty-twenty-two for July, twenty-twenty-three effective date of a new contract. So, we're getting ready to start the second year of that contract. It's, it's an initially a three-year contract with a couple of more renewals attached to it. We negotiate hard with Anthem, we've negotiated fixed, that your fixed fees will remain flat for five years, so we've got that. Stop-loss, you can't negotiate multiple-year contracts on, but we've negotiated the best contract we possibly can with Anthem to protect you against some catastrophic risk. And the, the piece that we have to try to get our hands around is the, the claim cost that, that did go up this year for you guys. And it's, and we recognize that. So, but you do have the option each year to, like we did this year, even though you negotiated a new contract for twenty-three, we looked at plan changes this year in, on off-year of the contract. All those terms are, can be looked at each year.
So, then the next slide, I really just want to kind of provide, I guess, information as to the RFP process itself. Ms. Harlan and her, her company really is involved in dissecting the RFP and setting up interviews and, and putting it on the street and getting the responses back. They set up meetings with all of the entities. So, our RFP process started in July of twenty-twenty-two. And you can see all the different steps you went through and, and it took till January of twenty-twenty-three to award that contract. And that's, that's the big multi-year contract, right? And so, then you want to step back and look at the budgeting piece of it. So, every year, you know, we're looking at budget at the beginning of the year. And so, Ms. Harlan will run our claims analysis and it's, it's kind of a joint process. She looks at our claims history and projects out what she thinks our claims are going to cost next year. At the same time, she's working with Anthem to negotiate that, the, the next year's stop-loss fee, the next year's if we have any changes in the plan design or if there are other items that the Anthem has brought to her and said, hey, we can offer X, Y, or Z. She will analyze all that and bring that to us. So, we kind of go through that process together, all three organizations, in the January, February time period. And that's about when we, after we get her projection of the claims cost, that's when we start to look at the, the rates. And she will recommend whether we should increase or, or leave them flat and we'll bring them to, forward to you. We have that process early since we have to adopt our budget before the county. And so, she really makes a, a, does a good job of getting things to us as quickly as possible so that we can turn it over and, and provide it to you. So, that's all I wanted to share with this slide was kind of the timeline.
And this slide really kind of shows you what, what we've experienced over the last few years and why this year is so unusual. So, the, what do we call it, purple bar on the left, is your premium. So, it's taking those health insurance rates that can include both the employer and the employee portion and multiplying it by monthly enrollments to say for each year, that's what you paid in premium. And what we've done is we've adjusted this to a per-employee-per-year, that's what that P-E-P-Y stands for. So, what, by adjusting it to a per-employee-per-year cost, we take out any enrollment adjustments that might be reasons why numbers are different. So, it's kind of looking at that and you can, what we've compared it to in that kind of gold bar is what your claims experience is. And by, it's really kind of a net cost. So, it's your paid claims, it's Anthem's fixed expenses. If we take out any claims that are above your stop-loss limit, we, we give you credit for your prescription drug rebates that you earn from Anthem now or well-done in the past. So, that's sort of an actual net cost each year on a per-employee-per-year basis. So, if we look back in the previous four fiscal years, your premiums were more than supporting your actual net cost. And then this year, when we look at costs, and the latest I had when I prepared this was through March of twenty-twenty-four, you can see that the costs have flipped and now your net costs are above your premium. And my costs don't include some of the other things that Susan includes in her budget development. Some of the costs like the clinic and the health reimbursement contribution and things like that. So, these numbers may look a little different than some of the other numbers you've seen. But it just, I think what's important is looking at why is this year so different? You see what happened on that claim side where it just flip-flopped and, and really went up from a little over, it was just under eleven thousand to being about thirteen thousand dollars per employee per year. So, it was a pretty significant increase. Yeah, it went from actually fiscal year twenty-three was about ten thousand, six hundred dollars per employee per year to right now, it's running around thirteen thousand per employee per year. And that's very unusual, we don't usually see that. And it should, it makes this year painful, but I don't expect it to continue at that level ongoing.
So, then we had our open enrollment. We're actually at a point where typically we set our rates and we, we budget, we adopt the budget before open enrollment even occurs. One of the benefits of the state taking so long to give us a final budget is we were actually able to get the open enrollment numbers after the fact. And so, as soon as open enrollment ended, Human Resources gave me all of that data and we were able to, we run our numbers. And so, on the left-hand side of this screen, we've got our original estimate for who enrolled. And you can see it by the, the one thousand plan and the two thousand plan, the wellness versus the non-wellness and who, how many people we budgeted on for each of the different levels. And based on, on, on guidance and history and, and what Ms. Harlan has shared, we only estimated about twenty percent of our employees would take the two thousand deductible plan. So, that was going to provide to us twenty-two-point-eight million in premiums between what we would pay ourselves and what our employees would pay us. Fast forward, after open enrollment, you can see where we landed and actually thirty-seven percent of our employees went to that two thousand deductible level. And so, that actually reduced our revenue to twenty-two million instead of twenty-two-point-eight million. So, we weren't quite expecting it to, to go quite that far. It's probably, based on what you said, where people are, where our claims are lying, maybe we probably should have budgeted a little bit more like that. But that will affect how much money we collect in, in order to be able to pay the claims.
But it also means that when we are looking at it, we do set the rates based on the actual relationship between the two plans. So, you've got more people moved into that higher deductible plan. That means they're going to potentially pick up a higher share of the cost if their claims are higher. And so, it's not like it's, you expect the claim cost to be adjusted for those folks that have moved into that plan.
So, as Ms. Harlan shared, the prior graph that we shared was kind of a pure view of the premium itself and the specific claims itself. This is our health insurance reserves, I think I was asked to bring this back in front of you again. I have readjusted the budget so that it does show, after going through and revising for open enrollment and adjusting for the revised claims cost that Ms. Harlan provided, this is where we are expecting to land, we do expect to use reserves again next year. Some of the costs that run through our health insurance fund, as we mentioned before, I think it's really important to understand, we do fund the health clinic. That's a large chunk of money, it's, it's almost nine hundred thousand dollars that we pay. And the expectation is if you are an employee on our health plan, you go to the health clinic, we don't have to pay a claim cost. We pay the cost for the facility, the employee does not pay a co-pay, the employee is allowed to go during work hours. They don't have to take time off work to go, that's part of the, the policy. And so, it is a benefit to them to go and then there is no claim cost there. And so, there should be claim savings inherent in, in funding the health insurance money towards the clinic. And, and that's just a side benefit. The other benefit is we run the wellness program to encourage folks to go to the clinic so that they can be diagnosed early and manage their healthcare early in, on defined issues before they become problems, right? So, you've got multiple facets of why we want to do that. And so, the numbers in here do include, you know, one-point-one million dollars for the HRA contribution that we will have to provide next year, includes the wellness clinic. So, this is a wider look at our expenses than what was presented before.
Can I point out one thing real quick, just that, I need you to explain to me. So, again, comparing to our neighbors, Ms. Fashani was bringing that up. So, some of our neighbors, actually, most of our neighbors don't even provide like the HRA account, and some do, but we're one of the few who actually let you carry over any unused portion. So, if you don't use all of your, let's say, a thousand dollars in a year, you actually get to carry that over into the next year. And some of our neighbors don't do that, use or lose it.
HRA the same as HSA?
It's a little different.
Similar.
Okay.
But you are, the way you fund yours, to your point, is more generous than what we typically see with a health reimbursement account. Typically, even if they allow you to carry it over when you leave employment, it defaults back to the employer. But Roanoke Schools allows a chunk of that to, for you to take with your exit. And that's a huge benefit that most organizations do not do.
I believe our counterparts are, what, six hundred dollar carryover, something like that for jails and PD, police department? I think it's like a six hundred dollar carryover or something, I don't think you can carry everything over, are we allowing to carry everything?
I think the schools is more generous than anybody, if I recall, and I can't remember the details.
I believe it's six hundred is the carryover for other county agencies.
And that's a big deal, that adds up over time.
That adds up to, at the end of your employment, to have that, to help offset the cost of retiree insurance and healthcare costs in retirement. Yeah, it's very generous.
And it's also a good way that, you know, when we have a high deductible plan, if you are not needing it in a certain year and you can save that up and then it's sitting in the bank waiting for you to use in the unfortunate years that you need it.
Okay. Well, we greatly appreciate your time.
Okay, well, I appreciate it and thank you for your time.
One last question, with the balance there on the health insurance reserves, where do you, what's rich, what's ideal there, Susan, or either one of you? The trend is not very good, obviously.
No, but I, every year at the end of the fiscal year, we provide a letter of where the reserves are and where, where we think they are. So, we obviously haven't done that yet because that's the end of June. We'll get the data by late July usually. But based on prior years, even though it's lower and we don't want it to drop much lower, you're able to fully fund any, what the, the immediate concern is can you fund your incurred but not reported claim liability? So, because a claim that's incurred today doesn't get paid for maybe a week to six weeks or two months. It's faster than it used to be because of electronics, but it still takes a while. So, our, our biggest concern is that you are funding that liability as a self-funded plan because you got to pay claims. funding that liability as a self-funded plan, because you've got to pay claims when they come due. I have no concerns at all that you're at risk of not being able to fund your plan. It, so it's still probably, it, it is okay, but we haven't done the official evaluation for this fiscal year.
We're, we're pushing the limit with this.
We don't want it to get much lower.
Her last letter was between three point seven and four point two. And, and based on budget, we're looking to be pushing down, down just barely below the three point seven. So.
We will do our part to provide Susan, her team, as much data throughout the year so she knows where things are running. And that's what we always try to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So we'll move on to the net last, well, not the last, but the next and probably most important slide here that you will want to see. And that's to go over our balancing. You can see I've got the revenues laid out. We've got the, so this, I, I truncated this and made this really short. I figured going through, you know, twelve pages of priority requests was not in your interest at this point that you would want to see it kind of streamlined and cut down. So basically, all we're looking at are the ads using the current additional money that we have available to us. I've got the general fund on the left-hand side. Dr. Nicely and I worked together to try and feed in what we thought would be desirous by the school board. And then there are some first ads that you will see remain from the original first ad backlist that we provided to you. And then we have the other funds where some, not a lot going on, but we are adding some teachers and we did get a little bit of extra money from the state. And so it's just where that's falling out. But as we go through this, we'll kind of go through each line. And if the school board desires to swatch, switch, anything out, we can do that and provide a final listing at our, our next meeting for your approval. So first, we, we ran payroll and did an analysis of what it would cost to give a one point two five percent raise to get us up to a five percent raise for all employees instead of the three point seven five percent that we already provided. And that will cost the school division a million six ninety-seven nine hundred ninety-four dollars. Ms. Rawlings helped tremendously in going through some payroll information from where we budgeted back in March, when we, we get the payroll at a stagnant point in time. And from that point up until, you know, we, we pulled it a couple of days ago. So it's been, you know, a couple of months. The Human Resources team has been fastly working on hiring folks. And so we went through and found the budget that we adopted with the positions that you already approved. We found three hundred twenty-four thousand eight hundred sixty-six dollars of laps where positions that were in the original file that we looked at had been replaced by bodies that were less than what they, the existing employees were. Right? And so we found some laps in there to be able to help fund additional priorities.
Do you understand that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We have additional employees joining the extended work plan. So it's going to be twenty thousand dollars. We pulled in a hundred thousand dollars of the athletic allotments so we can provide a little bit more to each of the schools.
That's on top of the hundred and twenty-four thousand dollar increase we approved back in March. So we'd, we'd set aside at one twenty-five, we can do a hundred of that, which is pretty good.
So that's a total of, what's the math?
Two twenty-four, the additional.
Two twenty-four divided by five. Come on, Susan.
I don't do math in my head. I'm sorry.
That's Mr. London.
Additional twenty thousand per school.
That's a Mr. London gif right there. Your.
So it was two twenty-five is our total now?
Yeah.
In our budget. Okay.
Yeah, how is that? Are we doing middle and high? How is that playing out? Do we know?
You know, when I did the math, I did it all for high. But we have, we have a plan laid out and we'll allocate it.
Okay, we're going to try to start to incorporate through the middle.
And there's equally spread in amongst the district.
Yeah, it, it's spread between, I think, the middle and the highs, I think.
Well, no, I mean, like in terms of like, I guess every Hidden Valley is getting the same as Cave Spring.
Right.
It's getting the same as Bird.
Only, the, the middles don't get as much as the highs. And the only difference is there's slight difference with transportation for Cave Spring High and Hidden Valley High and getting to Boogal. Because they, neither one of them are onsite. And so there is a little more additional transportation funding for them. But other than that, all of the allotments are the same per school at the different levels. We were not able to pull in the, the high school counselors to give ad days for them. So that kind of stayed in the first ad column. We did pull in six special education instructional assistants, and we held back one. So I know that will help with additional needs. The Title I grant, as Ms. Hogan reported earlier, they added to schools, so they added to teachers. I will clarify that the, that doesn't mean they get additional money. It just means that they have less materials to, to provide out to the schools. And so that's not an additional income for us. That's just offsetting something else. Adding six instructional assistants for, for the Title I schools, the ones shown here, this is not all of them. It's just very specific schools that was asked for us to provide an I A. The eight Yale teachers to meet the new proficiency levels, five hundred and seventy-eight thousand for that. And then adding the fourteen passenger buses, one per high school, half million for that. We were unable to pull in the transportation special, special education route manager. So that still remains on the, the first ad column. We did, there has been additional requests to look at a vape detection system. And so we worked out, we could lease them for the, for the near future, for a hundred and twenty-eight thousand four hundred and sixty-six. And this will be at all high schools and Burton Center for Arts and Technology.
As Ms. Peterson said, that was not on the original ad back list. But as we've discussed, I mean, that has become a true priority to try to equip and give our high schools some additional support with that. So we have some additional, you know, things we're trying to, to do today. I did send over that letter today to try to look at maybe that local ordinance we, we talked about in terms of vape stores and that kind of thing. I think we'll get some, hopefully some positive response on that. But our, our high school principals did a little pilot, or a conversation with some other districts who are using the system. And they, they spoke very highly of it. I know Mr. Terry had been working on that. So we felt really good about being able to do that and really truly address the need right now that our high schools are experiencing.
Did you say lease?
They're leased.
For one year?
Five-year lease.
For five years. Same thing we do with all of our other technology. It's just another system that, it's like our cameras. It'll be installed, kind of like, the vape detection system will be like a wireless, well, we don't have a wireless box in here. But if you go down the halls and see a little white box, or see a wireless box. So it really is a, a technology system itself. And, and we've been leasing all that type of technology for many years now. It saves them the cost. Where, where this is going to cost us a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, it will be extremely much more if we, we pay for it outright.
So that would be yearly cost?
Mm-hmm. And so what we'll do is we'll, we put all the leases, this will go towards the technology replacement plan, and we'll, we'll transfer it to that fund and that fund will pay, pay the leases.
Yeah. And I would just like to note that, sorry, go ahead. We did have students come forth to the school board, which I like to commend them for because they won a grant for five hundred dollars towards, well, they're going to use it for advertising and marketing and all. So we're not going to take your five hundred. But it's important for people to know that when students have a voice and they see a concern, the school board listens. And, and this has been my concern. It's been a lot of our concerns. And I'd just like to give credit publicly to those students who had an idea, the teachers that came together, and they presented it. And here we are. So.
Just so we have an idea, does it cover the entrances to the school? Does it cover the hall? What is it?
To the bathroom.
They'll go in the bathrooms. The next item on the list is the E Hall Pass. We will purchase this for all of the middle schools, all of the high schools, and Burton Center for Arts and Technology. We have also added the cost, Northside Middle School and Northside High School have already paid for their system for next year. And we will reimburse them that since we're going to fund it for everybody. So that was an, an ad that we put on the list. And then matching the four oh three B, up to six hundred dollars for employees who would like to, to fund the six hundred dollars, we'll match up to six hundred dollars in their four oh three B. We didn't have enough to, to match the four fifty-seven that the county offers, but we, we did match the, the school's volunteer plan. So that we have in the list.
One thing, the only thing that I'll say that I have some heartburn over is just that the ten high school counselors not going to two-ten. We know that the mental health, well, we talked about it earlier, the mental health and everything that's going on, the behavioral problems. I know that our counselors work hard connecting kids to colleges, all the things that they do. Their job, I feel like, is one of those, it's almost sometimes, like they say, the lineman in football doesn't get the credit. I know they work hard. I know they've had probably more put on them than ever before. And I'd love to try to find thirty-six thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars to get them ten more days. I don't know where we'll get it from, but I'll put that challenge on you, Susan.
She's smiling.
Can I put the challenge back in you? What do you want me to take up with your ad list?
Well, I mean, what do we, I mean, is there any thoughts on that with the other board members? I just feel like somebody needs to speak up because we know that their jobs aren't easy. And it, it has been unprecedented pressure on them since COVID. And, I mean, we deal with the behavioral problems, just like in the surveys we were talking about. These are things that they have to deal with every day. So.
And that, and that's mostly to help with summer enrollments because it's, it's adding days to their, you know, non-school year time. But to your point, I mean, it is time that they definitely need. The request is there for a reason.
Well, and I'm sure that they could probably help, they could do more work if they weren't overloaded. I mean, we're probably understaffed in that area, I would say.
We've added quite a few counselors over the years. I mean, added ten.
We have. But I mean, I know, like, if you got, like, say, Glenver Middle's a little over four hundred kids, and I got one school counselor there to deal with over four hundred kids. So that's a, you know, that's a, that's a challenge. And I mean, I know what you're saying, and I understand. But also look at it like, you know, it's ten more days of pay, too. So.
You're right.
Yeah. I'd like to see that big first ad back if, if we were able to find something.
The, the, two things, I mean, I, I, you know, you can look, I did it again there, Chuck, sorry. Keep touching the mic. You know, we could do, we could forego a little bit more of the athletic allotment to make, we've already, you know, done that. If, if you want to look at that. The, the special ed I As, I don't know if we could do one fewer of that. Is Dr. Harvey shaking her head no?
I don't want to touch.
Please, we can't take away this.
Well, they're not, yeah, they're not, they're not filled positions.
But I think the, the, that kind of plays hand in hand sometimes, too, I think, with the counselors and, and special ed, and obviously brings challenges that can kind of intermingle.
If we had that extra eight hundred and forty thousand dollars, that would have been a lot, you know, I mean, there just would have been a lot more stuff that we could have addressed, all three hundred and fifty, six hundred thousand dollars worth of stuff. Plus, you know, anything else that would have, I mean, this is all stuff that needs to get done. It's unfortunate. I'll give back my two cents on the real estate.
Actually, there's no two cents to give back because it costs more for your taxes this year than it did last year. The assessments went up.
That's right.
Well, I guess we can talk. I mean, I know we're not gonna, probably not going to solve this right this second, but I would like to try to figure that out before we go for approval here, I guess, what, next month?
Did we have like fourteen that we put back into something? Or how much was it?
Um.
Back in payroll app, maybe?
We did. We, we.
We had some like.
Twelve thousand four hundred and forty.
So twelve.
So we're pretty close.
If we took that twelve and maybe reduce the.
Two hundred and five days?
Maybe reduce the athletic down to seventy-five thousand or something. If you're, if you'd be willing to do that and, and postpone, you know, that twenty, I mean, that's just one idea.
I prefer to keep the athletic what it is because what's happening, I feel, is there is, like, there's things that aren't getting handled at the schools. And then we got to do the fifty thousand dollars every five years or whatever. We've got fundraising through the roof for these kids. And it's, we're the only division I, that I know of through a survey that I put out that's pay to play. And our, we've got tax dollars that we need to be using for our student athletes. So they have a, you know, access to sports. And, and we don't have to be nickel and dimwit people so their kids can play a sport. And there's lots of families out there that can't afford things. And that's what their taxpayer dollars are for.
We could also not, we could lower the match on the four oh three. Would that help? If we did a lower amount?
Well, what would that, I mean, you're talking about a six thousand dollar difference per school.
Five thousand, five thousand per school.
Five thousand per school reduction to pay for it.
I mean, I'm not knocking which teacher. Well, I agree with you. And I, I mean, I see the frustration.
I was thinking, I was thinking we were going to come close to seventy-six, which is what Salem's doing. Salem's doing seventy-nine thousand per school. And right, right now, what's the, what is it? What's the total?
I don't remember.
What was the total, Susan, that we're giving each school for athletic allotments?
Well, I, I, I don't have.
Because I thought we were going to be fifty-six thousand. I think I did the math. We're.
I don't have our current amount in front of us, but we did add one twenty-four at the first pass. I don't have the athletic allotments in front of me. I can go back and pull that.
I texted Ron about it yesterday. I thought it was fifty, we were looking at fifty-six.
So this, this fiscal year, we've already added a hundred and twenty-four? And we're looking to add another hundred?
For, but for a total of what? Per school? That's two twenty.
We'll have to go back and look at it.
All right, let's talk about it.
Maybe you did give five days instead of ten.
I was saying five days instead of ten.
Do we have two hundred and five-day contracts?
No.
I don't know. I think.
But you can.
It's just a small amount. I mean, it's thirty-six thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars out of a two hundred plus million dollar budget. And it's for the health, the mental health and stability of students.
For summer programming, mostly, right, Ken?
I, I, I think that that was the basis because all the enrollments we're getting, which are, are definitely up. And like, in some schools, that fewer counselors than others, to Mr. Rhodes's point. So.
How, I know, I had suggested that, you know, we take it out of the school board budget because I think our budget is way too high for what we're, what we need. And we take a look at that. And we've got some memberships that we're a part of that probably don't need to be a part of, organizations. And there's fifteen, twenty thousand dollars right there. And we probably need to go line by line, what we put in our, and some, some years, we don't even use it and then we kick it back.
I mean, if you got to enroll the people at some point, I mean, that's what I'm saying is I, I, you know, I hear, I hear the complaints, I mean, not complaints, I hear the concerns. Complaint's the wrong word. I hear the concerns. And I just feel like we got to be able to find thirty-seven thousand dollars out of two hundred million dollars. I mean, that's, you got to figure something out. But we'll, we're not going to waste everybody's time right this second, obviously. So let's work on that, see what we can come up with before we get to a final number.
So to that end, you know, we were asking you to consider doing another special meeting to come back to approve maybe early next week, which doesn't give you a whole lot of time to, but, and, and the reason being is our regular meeting is June twentieth. And ideally, we'd like to, you know, get this back to the board supervisors to start that process for their June twenty-fifth. So I don't know if y'all talked about that, or if we can look at a, the best date for next week, if that's possible. I know you're not all going to be here, but.
I, I will be out of town, but I'll be, I'll try to be available via Zoom. And I'll be out of town for that June, the next school.
I will not be here either. So soon is not an option.
Oh, well, how about calling in? I can just get a link.
It'd have to be my phone, yeah.
My phone?
Yeah, enough to be my phone because I'm not here to be able to contact.
As long as it's not like two o'clock in the morning for me.
Monday morning would be preferred.
Whatever you guys can do.
All right.
Hand me thirty-seven thousand dollars by Monday morning. Give me some options. All right. Does anybody have anything else? Susan, thank you for all your hard work. I know it's not easy. I know you've probably spent a whole lot more.
Hot off the press.
We probably need to give you more money for all the hours that you've been spending that you're not, you know, technically getting paid for. So thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Meeting adjourned. Meeting adjourned.